You ready? Okay. It is Thursday, July 20th, 2023. I'm calling this meeting of the Timas Select Board to order at 7:37. Judy and I are present. We have some new faces here tonight. And on Zoom, we have some people as well.
David and Nancy Burstall, Sherry Johnson, and Kim Harbaugh. And Rick Fowler was here and he's going back at some point.
Okay. All right.
We can't get rid of real recipes around here.
I'm sorry. It's just like surprised. This slightly further away. All right. First thing to do is review the agenda. Neil and I were talking about just trying, there's some things that will move to our next one, real business.
Okay.
And depending on whether or not Kevin comes in or not, feed study.
And we need to add the final bill from Morton.
And we need to add this. The Morton Buildings final invoice. What should we put that on there?
Highway.
Hey. Okay. Yeah. Lovely. All right, minutes. We have some minutes from our last three meetings.
I didn't see any dates, so I'm in the last three minutes. Do we need?
We'll second that.
Okay, do you need to spell out dates?
No, that's okay. We can approve all three meetings. Someone go. All in favor?
I.
I. All right, moving on, citizens input. Anyone would like, not with any means, but anything now? Oh, okay. It's okay. All right, so Public Works Project update. We have a new contract from Dubois and King. All of this. Hey, it's smaller than ours. And so we need to decide. And then also plan a meeting for this.
Right. They want to have a kickoff meeting.
Right.
But I haven't talked to Steph yet, telling her that that's a day meeting or me and Kay will come at nine.
Right.
They're just sort of seeing who's available when.
Yeah.
And like contract for the building thing is to help us do design engineering for assault and sanction. We just built a Newtown garage and in order to meet the requirements of the state grant that we got, we have to go through this process of designing.
Design and build. Did you want to review this anymore?
Sure, I'll take a quick look at it. Assuming nothing has really changed other than the price?
Not that I could tell.
Okay.
Did you see anything that was different? I mean, it was mostly just what we adjusted.
And then we went back to the Boy and Kings and we didn't get it last week, but we got it after that.
Yeah.
Stephanie is our program manager, so we just depend on her to make sure.
Right.
The ducks are moving.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess as long as what we asked for is in there and it's the agreed upon price, then.
All right, so you'll make a motion to approve me to sign it?
I make them. Which is the two of us, but I'll make a motion that Meadow sign the contract with Dubois and King.
I will second it. Okay, so the week of the 30th.
Yep, the week of the 31st.
The 31st is a Monday. What is your work schedule?
Hopefully we're calmed down by then.
Yes. Is evening better for you though?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you could find out from Stephanie if there are any evenings that week that worked.
Are there any evenings that you guys are not available?
I think I will be fine that week. Yeah, I know. I mean, something will always, unless it's sunny, I should be fine.
Well, you'll have everything else cut by then.
Oh, no. There's never ending amount of it. No, I can make any night work.
So if they want a kickoff meeting, it'd be more formal.
Yeah.
They want to tour the what we have now.
Right. I think Kevin won't be able to do that Thursday, the third, because that'll be a fire rating, but otherwise that should be fine. It should work.
Yeah, I mean, if they want a more formal one on site during the day, right now Saturdays would work best for me, but like I said, hopefully we'll be calmed down and maybe something else would open up.
But there's two places, two pages you need to sign. Page two and page 91 has very conflict of interest. They're saying they don't have a conflict of interest.
I've just been mixing all these pages up, so you're gonna love me now. That's the Mac.
This is this is This is my son, Michael, by the way. Just in case you wondered why we look a lot alike. I don't have a prescription.
Yes. Your papers I have in front of me. Better. Um, yeah. All right, moving on. There's nothing else, right? That's all we have to do. All right, Eric, you're up.
Okay. Let's see, we've been working on 140. The big tree's gone, stump's gone. Ditches dug, stone lined. We change a culvert at the top of Cobb Hill. That's all done. Um, we are ready for paving. Tom thought that we might pave tomorrow. But it looks like it's gonna rain, so he said he's got to go to Weston and do some emergency work and he's got to do some emergency work in Ludlow. And then he'll get back to us if we don't go tomorrow. And it looks like we're not going to go tomorrow because I don't see any equipment here.
Okay.
So all the ash trees but one are gone in that first point nine miles. There was one that was near the power lines closer than I wanted to be, so Green Mountain Power owns that one.
Have we reached out to them? Is it going to affect their lines or?
No, I mean, it's still live right now. They supposedly, they have a crew working all over the state, but I haven't seen it.
Okay.
So. That's all I've got for that. Next one is storm damage. And we had no major storm damage. Um, there was a small washout on Wright's Road. The culvert, I believe, was overwhelmed. By the time I got there, it had unplugged itself, but it had created a little washout, so I just it was one bucket of stone. I fixed it that night and it was fine. We repaired some other small washes here and there. But we had no major incidences. That's all I got on that one. Um, Mountain View, we worked on Mountain View Road this week. We removed a bunch of dead trees, some ash trees, and we got rid of some low hanging limbs or low hanging limbs. Um, and then we're going to ask permission to remove the trees behind the town office that are already removed, so I'm sorry, but we did.
And that was necessary for the on-demand generator we're going to get, or we're going to put it out there. And the ash trees were pretty going to hit here.
Yes.
So we cut those down and we trimmed up the maple that's near the old firehouse that was hanging over it. So we took much better shape.
A bunch of stuff over here.
It looks great.
And while the lift was here, Kevin took advantage of it so we could actually paint your primary design building. So we thank the the old primary committee and the historical society, thank the town for allowing us to use the lift to paint that side. It is a town building, but you know.
Yeah, yeah. Made it a lot more convenient.
And the the next one is road crew help with the work with the generators. That's up to you guys if you want us to dig the we got enough material out there now that we can reposition it and smooth it out once we get the lift out of there, so they have a nice flat place to put the generator. And then it's up to you guys if you want us to install, help install electrical conduits and all that stuff. It's gonna, it's already a mess out there, so it needs to be cleaned up. It's gonna be a bigger mess once you dig across to the creamery and all that stuff, so that's gonna look like a bomb went off. And then somebody's got to do it, so I'm assuming it's us.
When we did the, um, the contract, my understanding was we were responsible for groundwork. The road crew was going to do groundwork. I guess my only concern would just be getting sucked into doing like extra work just because you're there and you're handy. If that takes away from, you know, making that boundary of, you know, what's
I don't think there's anything too serious.
Yeah.
You gotta dig
trench.
Fifty feet of trench, I think, brought in altogether. Bury it back to the compacted and seed mulch and make it look pretty again.
And there's just a little trench, I think, over by the firehouse. As far as I know, Proctor Gas is going to try to run the line, the gas line through the firehouse, so it must be the electrical trench from the generator into the that's mine.
How long do you think it will take you to dig the trenches?
Depends on what we're running.
Yeah.
I'm assuming
that's fair.
You're gonna have a couple days in it. By the time you get done, it'd probably be two days, but start to finish cleaning up. Because you can dig them pretty fast, putting everything back together is that's the hard thing.
Do we know when they're coming, so we can better coordinate that? Are we supposed to have it all prepped before they get here?
The grant says we are supposed to have it done by September 15th. And the electrician is coming the last weekend, August, as far as we know. So it'll be between the and the contracts, we have the contracts for the grant work.
Yeah.
Firehouse and for the town office and a separate contract could run somewhere today. But who would like is $21,000 down upfront, so we can buy the generators and the other stuff. And Erica said he could store it down at the town garage until they get serious.
And we don't have any money upfront, correct? Do we have that grant money yet or no?
No, but most grant money is after the fact.
So how do we, where do we pull that from?
Just comes out of the general budget.
It'll be okay.
How much is the 21,000? No, how much is the total that we're going to get there at the end?
Um, 32 or 33, I think.
Seems a little high, but
because the whole project, the whole grant is for 33,000.
The whole grant was for 38, but we were going to get a, that includes Proctor Gas.
Right.
And when we, Ray Pratt and Kevin, I are going to meet with Proctor Gas Wednesday morning to figure out where the lines go and where the tanks go and
I mean, isn't one of the generators like 11,000 or something? So and he has to purchase it.
He's getting both of the, buying both of the generators.
Yeah, it looks like one's 13,000 and one's 14 and a half thousand.
Yeah.
So.
I feel like that's probably
I think we're lucky to get an electrician at top two. Tim Hart was the buildings facility guy for all the schools in the district, and he's been waiting for months for electricians that projects at all the different schools and can't get any of them done until
Yeah.
he gets an electrician.
Yeah. Well, I feel all right with the road crew doing the groundwork and is this one, you want us to approve this? Sorry.
Yeah, we should do that.
So you want them to keep track of that, like doesn't do that?
Yeah.
We might be able to use it as part of our match.
Yeah, and equipment and
Yeah.
our material, the whole show.
Yeah. All right. So we'll just agree on that in consensus and then I mean, a motion to approve these separately, I think. So the first one is the contract for electrical generator work.
I make a motion to approve the contract for the electrical generation work.
I will second it. All in favor?
I.
Nice. And then the contract for electrical work for the Timas Old Creamery project.
I make a motion, will you approve the electrical work for the Timas Old Creamery?
I will second it. All in favor? Okay. Lovely. Um, now, if you had a chance, I looked at that. Eric, is that correct? Do they have anything left? Sorry, we're moving on to the Morton invoice or last invoice.
Uh, I believe they are finished. I've been playing phone tag with uh, Rick today. I didn't actually get a chance to talk to him, but I think the only thing he had left to do was porch slab and the turnouts for the downspout.
Okay.
And that's all done, so.
And you're happy with everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what I can say is when Rick dropped that off the other day, I reminded him that when the electrician was there, we had between a five and $600 electrical bill for the heat, because the electricians had electric heaters in there trying to get the electricity going. And he pushed back a little bit and says, well, you know, the contract says you have to provide electricity for us. And then he admitted that, well, maybe that was a little bit over the top, but so I don't know what your thoughts are.
How much, how much was it like?
It was over $500, between $500 and $600. And it was we took possession of it like January 1st, so this was the
beforehand.
December when the electricians were in there doing.
I mean, do you feel like there was wiggle room to push back on it? And
I don't know.
I mean, I don't know. I didn't have the conversation with Rick, so I don't know.
So Kathy was pretty adamant that we should not pay them that amount, but Kathy's not on the board.
Right. And I feel like who is responsible for having that conversation? Then, that me? Negotiating with them?
I did tell Rick that I could look up the invoice if you send them to him or his proposal, so he could see that it was just
I mean, if we could get the evidence put together, like the dates of when the bill, when the bills came in and to provide them with that information and then
And then maybe just remind them too, that as stated in the contract, we were not in possession of the building yet and it was still yours.
Their building.
Yeah.
Should be, that should be general conditions.
Right.
It should be covered under general conditions under your contract.
Mm-hmm.
That's on the contractor.
Yeah.
I didn't get a chance to pull out the contract and actually look at it.
Right. I mean, I think if we just sent the the invoices that we received for power during that time.
So you can authorize us to pay this minus what that amount is, and then we'll just have a little bit
Can we just wait?
If they don't agree to reduce it or do something, then
Is there a
Yeah, I will make a motion that we pay them the amount minus the electrical or heating, electrical heating.
It was
It was electrical for
Okay, electrical for the heating. Since the building was not in our possession yet.
Prior to our possession.
Yeah.
I would second that motion. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Do you feel like that makes sense, go for you to
I'll send them a little note when I
Articulate all of that. I need any more articulation on our part.
That's why I leave, are you making a pile for me over there?
Yeah, actually making for a pile for you over here, but I changed my mind all of a sudden, so. Anything else, Eric?
So.
No. Great. The ditching looks great.
Thanks. Take a ride down Mountain View when you get a chance. That looks pretty good. That's a lot better.
That's great. All right, next, um, we'll skip the speed limit.
Kevin for a minute. Machine is shut off.
Yeah.
You do have the written report there that's the recommendation from the the ordinance itself is still in draft form. There's a couple of titles in it. So you will get that. We wouldn't be acting honest tonight anyways. We have to figure out whether we'll just send it to review the big cities and towns or
Yep.
an attorney of some sort. Probably we want to send it to County Sheriff's Department just to get them to see what's what.
And now, now that we have a second, you know, there's another road that's, there's interest in reducing the speed limit on. This is going to be included in the speed limit studies committee's work.
Asked the study students, the study committee thought that their last meeting was their last meeting. If you find something that you want them to look at or view, then
And I guess my question is, is that
meet again.
I mean, we've gone down all this process because we're, we're trying to change the speed limit, but it's actually
Trying not to change the speed limits because the speed limits are correct. What we need to do is do more enforcement.
Right.
We're not changing the speed limit. It's the both the guy from the regional commission and the county sheriff said the speed limits are correct. You know, the speed studies show that. It's just there's a few violators, so you have to figure out how to do better.
Catch them.
And we have talked to the county sheriff about switching patrolmen, so that somebody can be here earlier. And I would say that that would segue into Bill's petition about North End Road and Harrington Crossroad is talk to the sheriff's office and see if they can sit there a little bit and try to catch who's going fast.
Yeah.
He's slowing down multiple places.
Well, because that was, I just, when we first originally started down this road, we were originally looking at reducing the speed limit. And I felt like that was what was really difficult and I are we able to change the speed limit on dirt roads in town? Do we have that authority or is that?
It's set at 35 right now.
Right. Because all dirt roads are 35.
All dirt roads are 35.
Yep.
So yes, you could, but I think what you want to do first is try to enforce.
Have someone Thing is, we have a petition with a number of names on it.
And just four, five of those names are witnesses that have actually gotten in accidents on that stretch.
Yeah.
Being pushed over, you know, into the loose gravel and stuff.
Yeah. I would be interested in maybe seeing if the speed limit, maybe he would be willing to look at this and determine whether or not just more enforcement, it would be effective there, or if a reduction in speed from 35 to 25 for that strip would make sense. How do you feel about that, Judy?
Yeah, I think a speed study or, or, well, sorry, more enforcement would be good and see if that makes an impact. I mean, for the people who are already obeying 35, dropping to 25 is going to be painful for them.
Right. And this section is from Ronnie.
Brockman.
Bob Williams. Yeah.
So it gets past where all the little kids are in that real dark corner, but a lower barn near the upper barn.
Right.
Great little barn. That's I tried taking it at 35 in my truck and I know that corner never did corner 35. Yeah. I just went there.
Welcome, Kevin. Just in time, you're, we're at your time in the we were just
Know what I'm doing.
I was wondering if the speed limit study committee would be willing to look at this petition for reducing the speed on
His right.
His.
So we can we kind, we left it open that we're going to have to reassemble.
It's at the call of the chair.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, we can do that. It works.
Trying to determine whether or not more enforcement or whether or not lowering the
It's under your It's on the back there.
Meadow?
Yeah.
Um, I just want to remind, remind you guys that when Dave Fox was here, he said if there's you know who's speeding to call the sheriff's department and they will keep a lookout. He mentioned that at the last meeting. So if it's one person or two people, just call the sheriff department with the license plate number.
The problem is they drive different vehicles.
And I think maybe this whole section may not be possible, but certainly look at, there are a number of houses, there's a cluster of houses and there's like children and animals, so there
Right.
It may not be the whole thing, but maybe right by Harrington Crossroads.
Just right next intersection is mainly because, I mean, I have just nine grandchildren right there in that little intersection.
Yeah.
And they have gardens across the road and things.
So we can do, we can reconvene in another, another meeting. Talk about reducing it and more enforcement on that road.
I've given the sheriff, personally, the sheriffs that are patrolling permission to sit at our pond.
Yep.
Anytime they feel or anywhere on, I mean
Yeah.
For that matter, just like you said, enforce what's there for now, anyway, there's half a dozen, seven, eight people that I put on my porch and they throw rocks almost to the steps in my cabin when they go flying.
Okay. All right. So we'll
I would say
do another
The board's liaison with the sheriff's department, you should have a conversation with them about
Yes.
That area. Enforcement there. But we also want more enforcement on the east road, so.
So I'm that person, so I ask myself to do that.
No, I'm asking you. That's what we're liaison with the sheriff's department.
Okay.
Them about more
Yes.
On their enforcement list.
Yes. Yes, I will do that.
And then you can have the speed limit committee get together and discuss what they want to recommend to the select board. We should probably also talk with the regional commission about speed studies there and one of the recommendations was to think about other places on 140 that you might want to see it studied or see if we reduce it.
Yep.
But generally speaking, you know, based on the speed studies we had last summer, as those guys said, the speeds are fine. It's catching the, it's enforcing it.
Right.
And I think one of the things that's like, you know, 35 is still pretty fast.
This is
Right on the road if there's houses.
It's, it's fast, but then you have it is fast, but then you have a deputy that is lenient up to 10 miles an hour over, and that was at 45, so that's, you're approaching 50 on that. That's ridiculous.
Right.
So, yes.
It's 45 on a four-lane highway in San Raup. I don't know, I just, you know.
Yeah, no, I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Doesn't make sense.
You know, it's just a certain half a dozen or so that I think it more, just a few more hours, maybe a patrol in certain times of day.
Well, looking to drop in it, too.
Yeah.
They even split at the pond, they come down from both hills.
Yeah.
And when they come down, they're flying.
Are there certain times more than others of the day that
Well, sometimes in the morning, I can, I can name colors of vehicles. I can't name people because I can't see in the car when they're going by. I can name vehicles that, you know, certain times in the morning, it looks like they're really, really late or somewhere over here. And during the day, there's a few youngsters during the day and a lot of drugs that think that they'll be as loud as it can. And I've done actual small simulation on my own. And my truck, the anti- lap brake, my spinarmers calibrated in Formula Ford. And when I pressed through the hill above Brownies, I hit 37. And I hit my brakes when I got to Dylan's mailbox and I skidded all the way to Jess's because mailbox in the dirt with anti- lap brake. It was 47 feet. I measured it. So I don't know, just thinking of any human being or animal in the road. If an anti- lap brake system doesn't stop in 45 feet on a dirt road.
Well, you're
And I was at 37. That's two miles an hour with speed limit. So I'm just, you know, throwing that out there.
So we will go ahead.
Could be opening Pandora's box, but I would say talk to the sheriff's department about more enforcement.
Yeah.
Do you think track the time? Track the time, Phil, that they're coming through the worst.
Yeah.
That's what they wanna know. Ten hours a week, and if they can sit there for a couple hours, we need to know whether it's seven to nine or nine to eleven.
Next three weeks and I'll, you know, I'll be sitting there healing from either my neck or leg or a hernia, so I'll pick the next three weeks and just really pay close attention.
Because that's, that helps them knowing when it, when it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Speed studies done, that's gonna take months.
Yeah.
What do you feel like, have we lowered the speed limit in the past and it's been a headache? Or, I mean, just even thinking of just like a five hundred foot section, right where the families with houses are right there.
You still have to have somebody enforce it, whether it's twenty-five or thirty-five, if nobody's there to enforce it, it doesn't matter what the speed limit is, is which is what these guys told us.
Yeah, the speed limit is whatever you want to go to until you get over, it doesn't matter, you can make it ten miles an hour, people.
But there were signs like reduce speed.
Just a few people that pick it once your.
We just need to make, I, I need to make it clear to the deputy that thirty-five is, is it. Like, it's ticketed over that.
Cuz I have two places between, between we press the hill at Ronnie's, there's a valley in the field that is able to sit there. And then there's down at the pond, at the bottom of the hill, there's two different places in that same section of road. That they go the same speed at both places that they do when they go through.
Hopefully you start handing out tickets on that road and it's gonna be.
I think if you get it out there that, you know. If they just thought he was gonna be there, you know, they wouldn't. Right, people consider that a straight stretch of road, you know, it is quite a straight stretch.
Yeah.
Just towards down and up.
Right.
And you do have some children at play signs.
They seem to just ignore it.
Yeah.
If I hang in one from a tree, it's. They just don't see him.
Alright, so our plan is we're gonna have. The speed study committee review this and look at it and come back with us with some recommendations on.
Yeah, and then I'll contact. David and.
Yeah.
And whomever, whomever you get in contact with can just stop right at my house cuz my trucks are just, goes nowhere or whatever.
Alright. Thank you. These are the financial reports as a draft, but the financial reports.
Our draft, I would not have had a chance.
Do you want us to go through these now, or should we just take these home and look at them and then?
You have a question?
That makes sense to me.
I will generate an end of the year report to show us what the. What the carryover is.
Okay, let's do that.
And there is also a report that has the most of the special accounts.
I saw that.
It's a four pager.
I looked at it while I was sitting here.
We doing that?
So this is the. Alright, there we go.
Alright, so we'll, we'll all take time to review this, ask you all questions in between now and our next meeting. Warrants and orders.
There's some for the end of FY twenty-three and.
Anybody have any questions? If not a motion to approve.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Right, this grant reimbursement, Snafu.
Has been resolved, complete $200,000 for the paving grant.
Oh, exciting. Thank goodness.
So you can start tomorrow.
So the Snafu was that their computer system, they did something with their banking computer system during the June. Getting checks out. Why did you count all that?
Great. It'll make this look a lot better.
Been in the hole $200,000 within one of his.
Yeah. Alright, we had decided that we were gonna defer. We could just defer old business until our next meeting, since we're starting almost forty minutes later. So we'll put this old business list into our old business list for our next meeting. New business is set the tax rate, the town tax rate. Twenty twenty-three.
And so.
This is it.
You all have one of these that show you two, full tax rates that you set by the state. And down at the bottom is what we budgeted for taxes is six hundred and eighty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. It's divided by the grant list, which in this case is. Seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Which is one percent of the total grant taxable grant list. And so that gets a tax rate of point eight five six nine. And the local agreement is point oh oh one there, if the local agreement covers the extra that we voted for, that is exemptions. We have to cover the school tax for that amount of extra exemption that we get. And last year's tax rate was a dollar seventy.
Yeah, it was not that different.
And, and then the town report, we estimated that the tax rate would be around point six back, so. Last year's tax rate was point seven nine nine four.
Alright. Do we wanna set this? We wanna discuss this?
So was eighty-six cents, eighty? Was it?
Eight five seven zero, when you add in the one thousandth of a ten for the. That's per hundred dollars of assessment.
I mean, it is, it is what it is.
It's what we told, or what you guys, since I was important, that's what you told the town.
Yeah, if, if we knew what the end of the year balance was, you could probably reduce it a little bit by using some of that money, but. I think we might need to use that money for the suspension anyways.
Okay, so you make a motion to set that tax rate for that.
Is that what you're doing? You're making that motion?
I guess, apparently.
Alright. You're making a motion that we approve.
Zero point eight seven zero.
The fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Yep.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so tax due date.
The tax due dates, originally it was set for August fifteenth, but you have to give people thirty days notice.
Right.
So, I'm thinking that we will, that's built it out on. We're Tuesday. I'm thinking.
Be.
Could do the thirtieth.
Yeah, that sounds good. That timing, you'll be able to get them out at that time, right? Yeah, alright, then let's make a motion to set the due date of August twenty-fifth.
Then the second one's gonna be.
One is still November fifteen.
Yeah.
That doesn't change, cuz they have the thirty days notice.
Um, would anybody like to second that motion?
Oh, I'll second it.
I will just make that motion, second it, I'm in favor. Aye. Alright. We got a request from Stan Wilbur, Department of Genealogical Society. About the honor roll. And he wanted to add the Vietnam veterans to the honor roll.
Well, we, we wanna have some discussion about, yeah, the honor roll we're talking about.
That's.
The one over on the side of the old sheds.
Yep.
And originally it was done for World War Two, and then at some point they added on voters at town meeting decided to do it. And then Stan had a thing in tails a couple of months ago outlining all those meetings. And then they added. Korean War people, and we have a couple of names to add that got omitted. And I can say that the honor roll was out here, it was put up in ninety-one. We did in honor of all veterans of all wars, just because we didn't wanna miss somebody.
Right, I was saying, do we have anyone from World War One?
No, not on this one, because it was specifically World War Two, and then, but. When, after Stan's thing came out, you know, looking for other people that needed to be added. And actually, we got somebody that came in and said, one of them should come off because he had a dishonorable discharge. We don't wanna go there, um, so the historical society doesn't wanna. A couple of people came in that were Vietnam veterans and wanted their names added to that, and so Stan wanted to put them. The monkey on the select board's back to figure out what to do about it, so I don't know if you wanna.
Yeah.
Curious why we would stop at Vietnam. Plenty of wars since then.
Need a bigger board.
We just need a bigger board.
So that's why this one out here says all veterans of all wars, that's everybody.
Right.
Right.
So I don't know if you wanna think it over, talk it over.
And it.
Tried to get some input from.
Are, are they proposing to add a second board to cover these people or trying to add it the same one or?
They just, we're gonna repaint that one and redo it, Kevin Merrill fixed it up and now it's starting to fall apart a little bit. So we were just gonna add the names that we had from World War Two that needed to go on there. But there was a couple of Vietnam veterans wanted to know if their names could be put on it and that's not for the historical society side. For the select board to decide, it seemed like in the past it was voters at town meeting to do it. But that's why this one is out here, it's supposed to cover everybody.
Everybody, but I'm sure it also needs to be updated.
So I would, I would. I mean, there, there's, we should do them all, I mean.
But do we need to have that be approved by the voters? Cuz it seems like. In forty-three.
And then some point later, it was, they added.
Right.
And so, you know, if you had Vietnam, you're gonna have Iraq and Afghanistan and, yeah. Where do, how do you decide where it stops? Or if it should or it shouldn't be.
Does the historical and genealogical society feel like. Putting some energy into finding out, like.
How many names, if we, are we adding, if we add them all? Or are we keeping the stone out here and removing that so nobody's offended?
I don't think anybody is offended by it, I mean, this used to hang on the church. And then when the church burned, that was one of the things that was rescued and it stayed on the side of this building for a little while, and they stayed on the side of. Fire department for a little while and fell into disrepair, so once this thing was done, it was just tucked into the old sheds and we came across it and. The historical society had Kevin redo it.
So I mean.
Put it up on the side there, so.
It's a sign.
So you can go up to. Cover wars up to a certain point.
And then he did say that they'd be willing to maintain, they, they will accept the responsibility for maintaining the role. So if we give them the authority to maintain it once it's updated. Adding new names when they have to be added.
You wanna just add Vietnam or you're gonna?
No, I think we should update it to current times.
And so who's gonna do the research to figure out?
And I would say ask the.
Can we delegate it to the historical?
That would be my suggestion.
Ask them if they'll do it and I'll ask them at their next meeting.
Yeah, I think. And. Do we feel like that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I think it should be brought to current.
And you, should we leave it there, have them?
Yes.
Say we would like, if, if we're gonna do this, we'd like to see it brought up to current and then do a report before we make any further decisions.
That sounds great.
Yep. What she said, sounds perfect.
Alright, transfer station. Tell me about these stop laws that are visiting.
I don't even know what that is. Not in my vocabulary.
The stop laws?
That's the people that are going in after hours and throwing trash on the top of the. There's, there's been a couple of them in the last month. Charlie ended up cleaning up one of them and Gunnar ended up cleaning up after one. They just serve the stuff on the top, so this is kind of a jest, but you know, if anybody's got a camera, we can just put down there and somebody thinks it's working.
Right, just like a game camera.
Doesn't work because they're probably gonna steal.
Right.
We have wifi in the yard.
Right.
Those wifi cameras are only like eighty bucks.
I have one.
They're not big money and it wouldn't hurt to have.
Got mine at Home Depot, man, that was fifty-five dollars, that's amazing.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt to have a few of them down there, really.
So where, where do they, where do you send the signals to?
Right, it goes right to the, it's all wifi, so anybody can look it up on your phone and it'll record it too.
Yeah, my sensor's at the end of my driveway, and I can, I get it on my phone in Rockland. When somebody comes into my driveway.
Yeah, but do we need to plug it into like Chris Martone's?
No, wireless.
It's wireless.
It's just, it just need power to it and it goes wifi and then it could go to anyone's phone that.
If you're connected to wifi, you pick it up, I can, button main and I can connect to wifi and pick my.
So we put a camera in. That space, we just need to make sure there's like a sign, it's like clearly you're on camera.
Being monitored.
And.
You have to sign it.
And then maybe we do need to come up with some sort of, like, who has access to that.
I was gonna say, who's gonna get notified, who's taking care of the issue?
Right, who was, who's responsible?
You guys really wanna become Big Brother for garbage?
Well.
Uh, because, eh, speaking from experience of someone who's worked at the dump for. When you start and you start pushing people like that, it inevitably ends up on the sides of the road. Just putting it out there as from past experience.
I get what you're saying, but there is an issue, we do have some kind of repeat. People that are doing that.
Yes.
No, I know what you're saying.
I mean, sometimes if they leave an envelope in it, you know, you can figure out who it is.
That's kinda how I figured out one.
That's, you know, that's how we got the guy up involved and Jeff Ames had somebody dunk stuff on his property and the sheriff was gonna come. Pick it up and I don't know if they found anything or not, I haven't checked in and they forgot it, but they actually took the trash up and dumped it.
Right.
In a yard.
Can, can we hang the, you're being monitored? My first meeting was at five forty-five. Can we, can we install a sign that says you're being monitored and then see if that deters anybody?
Just that alone, smile, you're on camera. And maybe a please do not. And maybe, please do not throw trash away after hours, please come back.
That might be the. Before they. Walk over the fence.
That's another thing too that needs to be brought up, but I mean. Tickets being sold at the transfer station, I've been asked about that a lot. It's something.
We, we have that covered, you can get tickets here, you can get them through the mail. I leave them outside the door, people can stop. We have a sign up sheet down there for your tickets not there and you sign it up and you come to the town office next to get your ticket.
Yes, I brought it up.
It's, it's much better not to have money being dealt with down there.
Um. All right. So we're gonna just try a sign first and then pursue a camera.
I mean, option is. That reasonable?
Yeah. Um, I think maybe, you know. You have mentioned when we were doing the building a camera. For the town garage, just because there's a lot of investment in that building and that space, but. So far, we haven't had any issues with anything in there.
There's a lot of people that go in and out of there. In the evening. After they're gone. Been non dump nights.
Yeah.
I have no idea what they're doing, I can't see them anymore. Because the leaves are on the trees usually, I can see what.
Maybe we work putting up a sign at the entrance to saying the hours that it's open. There is a sign, but maybe.
Better gate system?
You don't have to.
Do we not do the cable across anymore?
We have it, still there, we don't.
I don't think the poster up anymore. I mean, officially, we're supposed to have had one for the transfer station to keep people out. But. You know, the road crew has to go in and out and then that, so. At the time, we were looking at it, it was really expensive to try to run electricity out there so that they could have an automatic open and shut thing.
The minute people leave salt or sand, in the other time, they need, people need to have access to the sand pile.
What about? After hours, just. Um, kind of closing off the, the upper part where the dump is. Like rope gate on each side of it, because technically.
And you'll get trash dumped right there.
Right, I think the issue is just that there are a few people who are dumping trash and.
All right, so I'd say, I think we should authorize Kevin to jump in his car and go down and see if he's there, can you see somebody now?
I don't think we should put anyone in the position of.
Put your firelight on.
Fire light on, yeah.
Would it be easier to leave a barrel of salt and sand at the entrance and say, grab your salt and sand here and then nobody needs to go beyond?
No, then you have to have, you have to have a lot of salt and sand, because there's a lot of people that use sand in the winter time, I mean, much more so than you would think. Um, Clarendon has a big area where they dump sand right in the front.
Yeah.
Um, that's the closest thing that I've ever seen, but a lot of people use, you know, I'm, I'm going in there quite a bit during the winter time, so.
Well, I think we could. Maybe I'll come up with some ideas and think about it.
Next meeting. You wanted, if you did think of putting a gate back up out front. I would supply two nice locust posts that would be there forever. Forever, they don't go away. But then that is. They're, we do hinder. Only have it open in the winter, maybe when the people actually needed sand, but maybe. Still, still access to the, um. Brush pile. Oh, so, gee, I didn't know townspeople can access the town brush pile. We don't brush down there, yes.
Maybe instead of a rest area, we just need to move the transfer station further back and then gate it off.
I mean. You know, then the next step is, if the transfer station is an issue, we could also consider not having a transfer station. And. And, you know. So that's also an option, we could talk, but think about. Um, ravens are a problem. Down there.
The ravens were a problem, we, I think we figured out how to do it. When the dumpster gets full, yeah, they can jump, even if the.
Yes.
The thing that comes down.
They go through it.
There used to be a, an old canvas, they couldn't get through it and then we put in some from the wire to hold it down, but the ravens to keep the bears out. Yeah, but the ravens couldn't get in there and pick it up and they made a real mess.
Right.
So Chris and Gunnar are working on. Replacing that, but they're gonna, maybe with lighter wire, but they're also gonna put a canvas back on it. So that the ravens can't get through.
It only lasts so long.
Yeah, they, they'll get through it.
It's about six months.
And they're gonna figure it out.
Right, but if we just put the canvas on, the bears will get through it, right? So we're gonna try something with both of them, it's being worked on, I just wanted you guys to be aware of it.
And we still have a committee that.
We do have a solid.
Solid waste.
They haven't met since COVID.
I mean, it feels like maybe some of these issues are things that we could defer to that committee to talk about and come up with ideas or solutions for us.
That would give them a reason to meet, because the last time we had to review the certification, recertification, the transfer stations are, we haven't actually had. Anything to do, so.
Right. Um. And it is.
And so the book recycling box is down there. A front page and the Rutland Herald, they're in three or four different places in Rutland County. So you can put the books in and this company is gonna take them away and we'll recycle them, make sure that they don't go in the dumpster.
Oh, cool.
No. They won't take magazines, but they'll take all kinds of books and CDs and tapes and things like that.
Nice. It's great.
And I've had people. Rattling my tree, when's it gonna be there, when's it gonna be there? And I said, it's gonna be there more than one day, it's okay, well, I'm gonna be away and I said. Get back.
Oh, man.
So we, we tucked it in right next to the big blue recycling box between there and the poles and. They have to come and empty it out and I don't know if they're switching out with another one, but actually.
Yeah.
How many books does it hold approximately?
A lot.
Oh, that's cute.
And they'll come whenever it's full, they'll come on a regular basis, but it, you know, it fills up fast, first couple of times they'll come and empty it.
Yeah.
Um. I would like to have the transfer with the solid waste committee meet and talk about. A lot of the things we're talking about.
Yeah. I've then come up with some ideas to, um.
And it is something that I've been thinking about is whether or not having. Now. Whether or not is efficient for us to maintain our own transfer station. Um.
I mean, you gotta look at the, how much it actually generating.
Right. And so if it was something that the committee.
Versus what?
Was willing to look at. I don't know how the two of you feel about it. It's a big deal, but there's also a lot of.
It can't hurt to look into it.
There was somebody that was in here and said, wow, why don't you just have, uh, Casellas come like we do? And I said, because when we looked into it, it was like a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Excel is not.
And they said, well, we have Casellas and she did a little calculation, she says, oh, my.
Excel. Reese.
And, and the last time I talked to them, they didn't want to come out here with a roof.
Yeah.
So I don't think officially the town has to have a transfer station, but you somehow have to.
I mean, it's a service, is it, is it convenient for people in town?
Right.
But you need to. Look into what it's costing us. And see what we are actually taking in on it. And that'll be your answer.
Well, and how many people are paying for trash?
It's about, we're, we'll take seven, twelve thousand dollars worth of tickets.
Yeah.
And it's costing us around thirty thousand. So you can up the price if you want to. I mean, there were some towns that were covering all the costs and state made, everybody start charging, you know, pay as you go. So now everybody, like in Dandy, you didn't have to pay anything, you could just go throw your stuff away because it came out of taxes.
Truth areas like that too.
Came out of taxes.
Until it was deemed unconstitutional or, or illegal for some reason.
The, the state decided that people throwing stuff away needed to be responsible, we were trying to get people to recycle more. Really, reality.
So we're not making anything else from where.
No, in, in reality, the recycling, well, and part of this is because of recycling, you can't charge for recycling.
But it doesn't actually get recycled.
It costs us more. Per ton to recycle it than it does to.
Throw it away.
Throw it away.
Save the planet, stop recycling.
Um.
You can assign that to, and then we'll come back.
That would be great. That sound.
That's why you something too, yeah, that might be something too, we look into, it's not doing the reset, we have to do the recycling.
You have to, yeah. And we have to have a place, if you have a transfer station, you have to do recycling, we have to do composting, we have to have a brush pile.
But the, but the thing is. Is it leaves here and doesn't get recycled, we recycle it, but it doesn't get recycled.
Doesn't matter where, what I, what our, the rules are rules.
They do.
Yeah.
They, they do a lot of places in town.
They go all the way up to that road.
Mm-hmm.
And so maybe it would be worth, maybe they have a different, uh.
Philosophy now or?
No, yeah, be worth having a committee.
Probably a discussion that you should have, uh, for the town.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're having a committee look into it. So. All right.
I will get them to give them.
Hopefully, thank you. Liquor license for. What is it called?
Timoth Roadhouse. Don't have their application in yet, but they're anticipating getting approval from the state.
Timoth Roadhouse.
So.
Restaurant.
Yep.
Right?
And so the select board is supposed to approve it, but. You know, you don't want to wait until August tenth. You could authorize Meadow to sign it or meet its boundary. Once the application comes, it's, you know, to serve beer and wine in a restaurant setting, you want to have dinner two, three nights a week.
Can authorize.
You know, the snack bar used to have it.
Yeah.
Right.
And they did it.
Yeah.
That would be fun if we authorized Gail to sign it, because I'm sure it'll be a quarter turnaround.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Good. Make a motion to authorize Gail to sign the liquor license for the Timothy Roadhouse of Best Moon Catering when it comes in.
Second.
All in favor? I. All right, feedback, form review.
Two of them, one on Sherry Johnson and one on.
Carrie is. She. On behalf of the Timothy Fun Parade organizers, I would like to thank the road crew for participating in the Timothy Community Fun Day Parade. This year, our parade covered the entire circumference of the town green, the children in attendance loved the trucks and I think so do the adults. I hope the road grill will become a permanent part of the parade. Good job, road crew. Um, I'm assuming Carrie, you don't really want any follow up on this, which is just a positive. Thing, all right, thank you, thank you, sharing. All right, well, the next one is from Ed and Shirley Busiary. Uh, after reading the tales and learning how our supposedly E and I committee excluded a member of our community from serving on this committee. We felt the need to respond on reading the E and I statement of values, I failed to see how this committee is of value to the town. To my knowledge, no one has ever been excluded from any event activity committee up until now. One of the statements includes the word familial definition equals all things relating to family, which lends itself to why a relative was excluded because of a family opinion. Shouldn't a relative in any capacity recuse themselves? When it comes to a vote, I do not believe when more than one family member serves on a committee of any sort lends itself to a self sided vote. We all know that we are talking about Michael Fowler, as this was made public in the tales and during the vote by the select board. Again, a selectman being able to vote against a relative because of personal differences. Also, one statement said fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community. Can you honestly say this is true? This happened to one community member, what is to say it would not happen to others if they didn't fit the mold? I also cannot see how anything has been accomplished by this committee, no matter what the reason is, we all know that majority vote counts, so if Mr. Fowler has any ideas or opinions that he would like the committee to take any under advisement. Can be discussed or voted for, again, or against. But it seems the strikes are against him with the makeup of this committee, we all have different ideas and opinions and don't have to agree. But let us be fair, everyone should count. Can, how can the E and I committee accomplish their mission when they refuse to let a Timothy resident participate? Please read your own mission statement, perhaps the name of this committee should be changed to equity and exclusion, or the committee be disbanded altogether. This is from Ed and Shirley Busiary. When you received this yell, did you get any idea of how, like, did they want a response, are they looking for a? Follow up?
We, that somebody needs to respond.
My thought was we could each respond with our reasoning. Or one of us can respond, not sure how you feel about that.
Well, I voted against re-reading Michael, so I don't know if you want me to be the sole person to respond.
No, I think it's.
We each responded. With our reasoning. Um, and then we can, uh. Go from there, they want more. Feedback or not.
I, yeah, I, I mean, I'm playing with responding to them.
Would you make that? I, I would like to hear those responses to.
What?
The response to what, you know, Ed and Shirley said, I would like to see your reasoning in writing and I would like that spoken out at a meeting. That would be appreciated.
That's fine, we can do that. You can do that.
Yeah. All right.
So.
Members' concerns. Any, you have any concerns?
I do not.
Uh, miscellaneous correspondence and mail? No. Lovely. Uh, do we need to have an executive session tonight? I can't think of a reason to have one. Great. Um, our next meeting, well, we. Will have to have a meeting with, um. Dubon King sometime between now and.
Yeah, Kevin, you missed this part, but. The contract with Dubon King, they want to have a kickoff meeting the week after the thirty first.
Right.
Okay.
And so far, we said, we would like them to meet in the evening, but.
Yeah.
I don't know what your availability is.
Evenings, I'm usually pretty good when I'm not panting.
Town buildings, right, yeah, um, and we know, we didn't know that the, the first Thursday there.
Yep, so even, yeah. Just other than the fire meeting, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm included in that meeting.
Yes, oh, yes.
Rather, you know.
Please come. Sorry, I was assuming you were going to be involved in that committee.
I think it's kind of a kickoff meeting, public meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Stephanie and people from DMK and select board and anybody else who wants to come. They want to tour the current facility. Perfect. So I will get back to Stephanie and then get back to you guys, but, great.
Lovely. So our next meeting that we know of is scheduled for Thursday, August tenth.
Yep.
At seven o'clock.
Yeah, Kim. I know. I shouldn't be.
That whole thing changed in like an hour.
I. I. I ran out of paint. And a square, about a two foot square.
But you got it done.
That's, for the most part, it's done, it came out really good.
Thank you.
We heard. Hi. We heard the beeper come on, got a little nervous in the bank. Well. I just was leery of tomorrow's weather and.
Oh, yeah, yep. All right. Um.
Right.
We can adjourn. And it isn't even terribly late, we did it before nine.
Got all but two feet of that building done, okay. Yeah, it's just a tiny section, you really can't even see it, so. But I would like to finish.
For coming, um, on the computer and.
It was lovely to meet you, thank you for staying for the whole meeting.